Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. I'd like to get going with the special meeting so we can get to the regular meeting. Special meeting agenda is before all the council members. Tonight, the hour of 5:30, having come and gone, I'd like to call the special meeting to order at 5:38 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Purpose of the meeting, we have one item, two items before. It's a public comment. Does anyone who would like to comment on any items on the special meeting agenda? Just for the record, the special meeting agenda, we have three items. The first item is the Crossing Guards Safety Plan. The second item, discussion of property and casualty insurance. And then the fifth and sixth items are Republic Service items. Are there any questions from the public? If not, we have Adam Bryan from Crossing Guard Services in Zoom. He was here at the meeting on Tuesday, and he's presenting now. Just for the City Council benefit, this is, there's a motion on the regular agenda to engage the services. I know our deputy chief, our deputy assistant chief, Black, and also our police chief have not only worked with this proposal, but also our goal is to make sure that we get this moving. So, Adam, we have you via Zoom if you want to do a brief presentation. I know at the last meeting, Alderman Williams, Alderman Tillman, Alderman Smith were here. But, Adam, you have the floor now.
(inaudible)
Adam, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me, sir? Okay.
All right, go ahead, Adam. His last name is Adam Bryan.
All right. So, thank you, thank you for your time. I'll just briefly go through kind of what we do, just kind of some of the specifics. So, my name is Adam Bryan, and I run Crossing Guard Services. We started in 2022 in the Northeast Connecticut, New York, New Jersey. Just really because of the man, we're kind of growing nationally at this point. So, what we do is we manage the entire Crossing Guard program for municipalities, law enforcement agencies, and school districts. Kind of what that encompasses is the Crossing Guards are our employees. So, that just means we take care of the hiring, the training, the insurance, the payroll, any kind of management issues, pretty much the whole. So, one of the bigger areas, and this is kind of a pain point nationally, is the recruiting. The one thing I really want to point out is that city residents will always have priority when we're hiring. Like I told the mayor on Tuesday, in a perfect world, all our employees would just walk to their post and then walk home when they're done, you know, in the morning and the afternoon. But that's just not always possible, but we would absolutely love that. Some of the strategies we use, it's just, it's really a lot of hard work. But we do the basic things like indeed.com, newspapers, that kind of the things that everyone does. We also invest heavily on Facebook, Instagram. We'll visit all the senior centers. Colleges have been a big source of some great employees for us. We also offer a hiring bonus. So, if, you know, Mr. Smith works at Main and his friend is looking for a job, and Mr. Smith says how much he loves it, if that new employee makes a thirty days, we'll give Mr. Smith two hundred and fifty dollars. That's worked well. The other area we found are the kind of gate workers, the DoorDash drivers, Uber Eats drivers. This schedule, you know, hour, two hours in the morning, hour, two hours in the afternoon, has worked pretty well for some of their schedules. And we would love the councils, you know, anything really that you can do to kind of support us, whether that's some events you could let us know about where, you know, maybe there's a lot of areas seniors at. Because seniors will always be our, kind of, our group only because of, like I said earlier, just the hours, a couple in the morning, a couple afternoon. So, it's, it's pretty difficult for someone who works, you know, typical nine-to-five job. The other area which is critically important is obviously compliance, you know, that our employees are around children, and they have to be safe. So, we do a very thorough background check, which includes anything child-related. We do a drug screen. Our safety requirements are critically important. You know, the blood will check, citizen legal residency check. So, we conduct all that, and that's all transparent to who we're reporting to, which in a lot of cases is the law of enforcement, but, you know, we've never hidden any information or not disclosed it. So, you know, training development is a critical, important piece of kind of what we do. Since they're not currently programmed in place, what we'll handle that is in mid-August, we would have everyone come in, do a classroom-type training, watch a video, talk to an instructor, do some role-play, and then we'll take everyone out on the street and kind of walk them through and get their total ten hours of training. The one thing with the training is a supervisor has to sign off on everyone, so we know that everyone's trained and they're ready to go. The annual training, it's a refresher. We bring everyone in, so not year one, year two. We bring everyone in for a couple of hours, make them watch a video as a refresher, answer any questions. If anything changes, that will provide an update. We'll also hand out their equipment that time, so it's kind of what you would imagine as a Crossing Guard, stop-signing paddles, they'll get a leather jacket, a leather hat, raincoat. We give them a state ID badge that are identifiable. We will give them a traffic safety vest. It's a very, very large front and back to its Crossing Guard. We're looking to see how the Calumet City load on that. They had a great idea to even better help identify individuals. So, we're just trying to figure out if it's a decal, a badge, but it'll look very professional. So, management is, you know, very important as well. So, we'll have a day-to-day manager that is located within miles of the city, and they'll be there all the time. So, this person's, as well, wears many different hats, but the scheduling is a big one. They check up on everyone. If anyone has a complaint, they would go to this manager, and then the manager will handle it appropriately. Also, if the school, say, they're going to snow day, or they're going to leave early for testing, or what have you, this is the central point of contact for the schools as well, so there's always that open line of communication. This manager also responds to any events we might have, and they'll make sure everyone's equipped and all the supplies are readily available.
Adam? Adam? Can you hold on a second? Just for the record, we have Alderman Wilson in the special meeting at 5:47 PM. Alderman, this is the Crossing Guard presentation before the City Council that's on the agenda. Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you. So, scheduling is another critical piece, obviously. We need, you know, everyone on the post, on time, in uniform. So, one way we kind of protect any call-outs or resignations or what have you is we have over-hires. So, we'll have two extra Crossing Guards. They'll be on the busiest post, so if someone calls in sick, or something happens, we just move that to that other post. It's not, you know, we're not calling anyone in to handle that. Although we will have, from time to time, we find people who, they can work, but it's kind of sporadic. Maybe they can only work Tuesdays and Thursdays, or something like that. And then we'll, you know, we can't provide them every Tuesday, Thursday, but we'll work with their schedule, so we do have open, you know, we can call them and have them come in. We also have a twenty-four-hour call center, so if, you know, someone can't come in for whatever reason, or has a question, or, you know, the school needs to get ahold of someone very early in the morning due to changes, you know, that manager will answer. But we do have the call center, and then they'll escalate to an appropriate manager to handle whatever event that might be occurring. Since the Crossing Guards are our employees, we handle all the payroll. So, we pay everyone, we handle their taxes. We pay them every two weeks, it's direct deposit or a check. And then we would invoice the city every two weeks as well. So, I'll go into that a little bit later. But if the two weeks seem to work well, so people get paid, then the invoice can be kept up to date. So, insurance is, you know, obviously a big piece just because of kind of the dangers of this type of employment. Again, since the Crossing Guards are our employees, they'll be under our working comp, compensation plan, you know, God forbid someone gets injured on the job or what have you, but again, that's under our plan. We also provide the general liability, so if something were to happen, that would go onto our policy, and we will be, you know, whatever requirements the city attorney and the risk management will be requiring of us. So, this is kind of a high-level timeline, but, you know, the more time, the better, just because we would be hiring, you know, all new people. It's not, you know, as the years progress, it, you know, will have more and more staying, so it becomes a little bit easier. So, the plan would be a four-week minimum. And really, the kind of, the long part of that is just the recruiting, the training, the outboarding, all of those pieces. Because a lot of the major, the major, not issues, but the areas we need to solve are exactly where, where the trust will be, the hours, how many, things like that, that will all be solved prior to this this full year end. And we would, we would start recruiting and putting fillers out well before the month. Okay, so, here's the pricing, and the one thing to keep in mind with the pricing is we pay the Crossing Guards, so year one would be fifteen dollars an hour, and then we charge the city twenty-two, twenty-eight per hour. Now, that includes everything I've discussed, the management, the insurance, the taxes, the equipment, and there's no startup cost, there's no end-of-year cost, there's no, you know, you won't receive any kind of additional cost from us. It's, all these things are built into the hourly rate. So, basically, the way it works is the, we only charge for every hour the Crossing Guard orders. So, those four weeks where we have a supervisor there, and we're doing the training, you won't receive any kind of invoice for that. It'll start on day one, make it up an easy number, but say, we worked twenty hours on day one, we would invoice for those twenty hours of a five-week, or every two weeks. So, the numbers aren't set in stone right now, only because we're not exactly sure how much we're closing down, but we're not exactly sure the hours per day. So, we've not spoken to the school district yet to get all those specifics, just because we're still discussing this, obviously, with you tonight. So, we wouldn't have jumped that too far, but that's, that's the barriers of this.
Okay.
Just kind of, okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, wrap it up, Adam. We are probably twenty minutes away from starting our regular meeting, so.
Okay. Yeah, so, actually, perfect time, this is the end. So, you know, why else? Just because we provide all the areas, including human resources, recruiting, management, the payroll, you know, kind of all those areas where the city would have to kind of take all those costs, insurance, things like that, and kind of spread them all over the city where we can do it kind of in a more efficient way, only because this is all we do. So, yeah, so, Mayor, that's wrapped up.
So, a couple points. The assistant chief, Black, is in the back. He mentioned, Adam mentioned, the locations. I believe we have fourteen locations in Calumet City for Crossing Guard. What's on the agenda is to engage the services and have the city attorney draft up in a government agreement, but also draft up and work with the school districts. So, this is the engagement portion. Any contract or anything else will be brought back to the city. Our goal is also to look at using our traffic safety dollars if we can. We have to get that approved by the state of Illinois. But Adam is bringing this to, Adam and Chief Colas and Assistant Chief Black are here to answer any questions, but they researched this company because we know the City Council had an appetite for bringing back Crossing Guards, taking the liability away from the city, but working with the school districts. This is the best plan that we, that the chief and everyone came up with. Are there any questions for Adam, or any questions for our chief?
I have a question.
Alderman Wilson?
Why was this not brought before Health, Education, and Welfare Committee?
It can't go there, Alderman. This is the presentation portion.
I mean, but I wasn't even informed that we were having a presentation.
Did you not get the agenda, Alderman? It was just put on?
No, because I don't have emails, Mayor.
Okay. It was just put, it was just put on the agenda, Alderman. This is the first, second time that he's been here. So, again, what's on the agenda tonight is to engage the services, and then that will be referred to your committee. Does anybody else have any questions? Adam, thank you for coming in tonight. Thank you for giving us the information. Is there anything else, Adam, that you want to alert the City Council of?
No, thanks so much for your time.
And this is not only HEW Committee, it's Public Safety as well, so if you guys have a joint meeting, you can make sure that this is filtered through both committees. So, the goal is to start this in August or September, when the school starts back? And, Adam, you would need a leeway, probably of when school gets out in May, to start it, like, in August or July, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Only because we're just, we need to hire sixteen, seventeen individuals in training, you know, the whole process.
Okay. And accordingly with the insurance information, we would probably just need additional insurance policy, and I think the treasurer brought this up as well, so that would have to be included in whatever we bring back before the City Council. Okay. Thank you, Adam, for your presentation. The motion is on the agenda tonight, and we'll make sure that both committees will spell out what we're going to do with the Crossing Guards. Just for the record, Alderman Gardner was in the meeting at 5:49 PM. This is the special meeting portion, and we've done a presentation on Crossing Guards, bringing Crossing Guards back to Calumet City is what the City Council is discussing right now for everyone just walking in. Thank you, Adam. Our next presentation is, that's on the agenda. Each year, we have to approve our insurance, our property and casualty insurance. We're going to ask Cliff Taylor to come up and talk about where we are at the presentation. We have to approve this by April first of every year. This was sent to the City Council. Cliff, we'll go through the numbers. Cliff met with myself, John Casparic, and our city treasurer. And Cliff, you want to present to council with the property and casualty numbers?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Alderman, other elected officials, valued residents of Calumet City. We are coming upon that time of year for our general liability and workers' comp renewal that renews on April first. I think you guys, everyone should have received the proposal. Of course, we do have an increase this year with the market and the way things are going in the industry as a whole with public entity, especially in Cook County. Every year, we are seeing higher limits, higher premium. Carriers are reducing their limits, increasing our deductibles, and we're just seeing it across the board. One thing that is of, that we want to discuss in terms of one of the carriers, and it's one of the excess carriers, they are making somewhat of a major change to their coverage. They are no longer covering sexual abuse coverage, and that's not specific to Calumet City, it's across the board of all their insurers. They're just not covering it anymore. So, what that does to our plan as a whole, just for the sexual abuse line of coverage, our limits are currently fifteen million. With one of our excess carriers canceling our sexual abuse, it takes our limits down to five million. Now, there is a way we can get it back up to fifteen million, but we would have to purchase a standalone sexual abuse policy to plug that hole. And if we do that, it'd bring the limits back up to fifteen million, but that would be an additional cost of eighty-eight thousand dollars. So, that's something that we have discussed, that that's something that you want to entertain if you're okay with the five million, or if you want to get it back up to that fifteen million. And again, that's just on that one line of coverage, everything else stays as is. In terms of premium themselves, let's get here. Premium is going up approximately eighteen percent, and again, this is without that additional line of coverage. So, with everything else being pretty much equal, a premium would go up approximately eighteen percent, approximately one million, two hundred, two hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars. That does include the workers' comp as well. Workers' comp is billed separately than the rest of the other coverages. Are there any questions?
I know we have this matter on our regular agenda, Cliff. And part of this was everyone should have received the loss claims, the large liability loss claims. Please take a look at that. That involves executive session items, if you want to discuss it. But that has all of the open-close cases with the city of Calumet City, but it also has what that amount is. And some of these cases have been discussed, but just to draw attention to that, to the council, you'll see the large liability loss summary, and also this policy that we have to do every year. It's on the agenda now because it has to be approved and binded by April first of each year?
Yes.
I have a question.
Alderman Wilson?
Do you have anything printed out or in writing? I do not have email or access to the same tools as the man on council, so I don't know what you're talking about. So, I cannot vote on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can make sure you do have a proposal, though, yes.
Any other questions? Not? Thank you, Cliff.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Everette, with the items five and six, would you, it's on the regular City Council agenda, would you like to discuss it then, or discuss it now?
It would be nice to discuss it, and I thought it was a committee.
That you canceled, so, do you want to discuss it now?
Why was it canceled?
Alderman, do you want to discuss it now?
It was canceled because you didn't post it, so I couldn't host it without proper notice, correct?
Alderman.
Is that correct?
It was posted in time, Alderman. My question?
My Public Works Committee meeting was posted in time.
It was. Do you want to discuss this now, Alderman, or in the City Council's meeting?
I have a copy of my Public Works Committee meeting, and it was not posted.
So, there being no further business to come before the special meeting, we'd like to adjourn the special meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the special meeting at 6:05 PM? Motion made by Alderman Williams.
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor? The special meeting is adjourned at 6:05 PM. We will start the regular City Council meeting in five minutes. All right, everyone, we'd like to start the regular meeting, call the regular meeting to order at 6:11 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Will everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance? I'd like to call up Pastor Fluker to offer a word of prayer.
Good evening, Mayor, Alderman, City Council members, and all of the members of our great city. Let us look to the Lord eternal God our Father. We thank you once again for allowing us to come together, not just to gather our minds, but to do things in a manner that is well-pleasing in your sight. Father God, as we come together, bind us together as one, and unite us together in unity, that whatever disagreement, whatever dissension there it may be, may you bind us in a way and position that we would do things decently and in order. We give you glory, we give you honor, and we give you praise, and we thank you for this privilege to serve our community and to serve our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. At this time, before we do public comment, I'd like to invite up our fire chief for
Thank you, Mayor and council. We got a special recognition tonight to our very own deputy chief for his outstanding achievement of obtaining the executive fire officer through the U.S. Fire Administration. The U.S. Fire Administration is celebrating its fiftieth anniversary this year, and in nineteen eighty-five, they started an executive fire officer program, which is a four-year program consisting of time spent at Emmitsburg, Maryland, along with assignments throughout the year. The EFO program provides leadership skills for the ever-changing demands, which will strengthen not only the Calumet City Fire Department, but the city as well. which will strengthen not only the Calumet City Fire Department, but the city as well. And I could tell you firsthand that I've seen this every day, and I'm sure you guys have, has, uh, as well, uh, recognize Pete for his outstanding work, especially with the recent flood. This is something that he lives for. Uh, to date, out of that fifty year, or I'm sorry, thirty-nine years of the E F O program, four thousand seven hundred and twenty graduated from it. Put that in perspective, just on state of Illinois alone, only a hundred and sixty individuals obtained their E F O through the state of Illinois through this E F O program. So it's quite accomplishment again for Pete. Also, just to give you guys a little tidbit, his dad, Jim Benenelli, Pete's father was a fire chief of BP Amaco in Whiting, Indiana, and the Burnham Fire Department received hi- his E F O in nineteen ninety-four. And I'm sure he's very proud moment for him as well. Pete joined the ranks of only one other member of the Calumet City Fire Department, retired member Dan Smith, who received, received his E F O in two thousand and six. I think it's gonna sum it up the best if I just read this letter here from Congresswoman Robin Kelly. Dear Deputy Chief Fire, uh, dear Deputy Fire Chief Pete Benenelli, I want to congratulate you on your completion of the Federal Emergency Management, FEMA, U S Fire Administration, National Fire Academy, Executive Fire Officer Program. The E F O program is a highly competitive, multi-year training program for senior level fire and emergency medical service leaders in the United States and worldwide. Your completion of this unique program is a testament to your dedication to the service and the safety of Calumet City. I am confident that the E F O program is inviting you with invaluable experience and insight that will benefit your community. Thank you again for your hard work and congratulations on this significant accomplishment. Sincerely, Robin Kelly, Member of Congress. So on behalf of the Calumet City Fire Department and the city, I would like to congratulate Deputy Chief Pete Benenelli on his outstanding achievement and present you with this plaque. The plaque reads, Mayor Thaddeus Jones proudly presents to Pete Benenelli in recognition of his hard work and dedication for successfully completing the executive fire officer program. Completion of this unique program is a testament to your dedication to the service and the safety of Calumet City. Congratulations.
Thanks. Mayor Jones, city council, thank you for this recog- recognition. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Chief Bacher for allowing me to leave, go to Emmitsburg many times, many hours in the library, a lot of research I did. I'd also like to thank all my research participants. I'm looking forward to sharing my results of my research with the city councils, specifically the Public Safety Committee. I'd like to thank my father and then my wife. I'm trying not to be emotional here. Our, our wives are our backbones for many of us. We have to leave, go to school, go to many hours to train, and our wives are there to pick up the slack for us. And, uh, we appreciate that, even though sometimes we don't tell it. So Lisa, Lisa, thank you. And, uh, Lisa was also my editor in chief on all my research papers, so, but, uh, thank you. I love you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, and congratulations Deputy Chief Benenelli. Appreciate your hard work and dedication to Calumet City. Uh, we know you go a hundred miles an hour every day, so your motor is a hundred miles an hour. And I don't think you have a, a slowdown motor, but we love you being in Calumet City and your dedication. At this time, we also would like to go to public comments. So if anyone wants to, um, stay in the room or you want to take a recess, chief, for pictures, uh, we'll allow that. We know we want to give a, a round of applause to our firemen here tonight, our firemen and policemen that own shift tonight. Chief, uh, Bacher, is this, what shift is this, the red shift or?
Black shift.
Black shift. Let's give a round of applause to our men and women of the black shift fire department. Thank you guys for being here tonight. We're gonna move on with, uh, with our agenda. Um, we're at the public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address any items? Any resident who would like to address any items on the agenda under public comment? Going once, going twice. We'll move on to item five on the agenda, which is approval of minutes. You have the minutes as presented before you on the, on the agenda. Are there any questions or revisions?
I have a question. Can, oh.
All the woman.
Uh, can the minutes be printed so I can read them? Because I do not have email or access to the same tools. So this is going to be redundant, this whole entire meeting. Um, so I, I, I cannot vote on something that I've never seen.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented on the agenda?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
I do not have access, so no.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
For the record, everyone has access to our Muni code. I will ask the Alderman to keep your agenda in your comments, focus on the agenda. Let's get through this meeting focusing on the people's business. Everyone has access to.
I do not have access.
Alderman Wilson, you're not recognized.
I have, I have texted that to my council.
Alderman Wilson.
I said this in the meeting on Monday. I do not have access. I have no need to lie.
Alderman Wilson, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do this at the meeting.
You, you are sitting there and you are lying. I do not have access.
Mister reporter, can you please sit down while the meeting is taking place? We're gonna ask all participants, please don't come in the back and please don't stand while the meeting is going on. We want to conduct this meeting properly. We want to get through this. Alderman, you do have access to Muni code. We're gonna continue on with our agenda. I will ask the Alderman to please have the quorum in this city council chambers as we continue and finish this meeting. The roll call was for the minutes, and it was six voting to approve the minutes. Six to one approving the minutes. Item six on the agenda is reports of standing committees. Alderman Smith?
No report.
Alderman Patton, the city council reports, uh, I'm sorry, reports standing committees, sorry. Got it out of order. Got it out of order. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
No report tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams.
No report, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Utilities, Alderman Patton.
No report, thank you.
All right, uh, Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. The Ordinances and Resolutions Committee held a meeting March twenty-fifth. Um, the minutes from that meeting have been posted and it will, it will be on the April eleventh agenda. Uh, I will also give the full report at the April eleventh meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, and Welfare, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I am requesting the presence of Health, Education, and Welfare Committee members, Alderman Patton and Alderman Smith and the community to attend, uh, a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, April seventeenth at six thirty P M here in City Hall. This meeting will serve as a vital platform for us to discuss the upcoming, uh, meal, mentoring and emotional and adaptive living, living activities, and address, um, a pressing issue that affects the well-being of the entire community, mental rape. Mental rape is a term that may be unfamiliar to some, but it refers to the profound psychological harm, uh, inflicted upon an individual through aggressive means such as profound harassment, retaliation, and bullying. It refers and bears similarities to physical rape. Uh, the sense of having one's boundaries, uh, altered or breached. However, instead of a physical violation, mental rape involves a forceful imposition of psychological trauma. As a survivor of physical rape, I understand deeply uh, the feeling of having someone force themselves on you and in you. Uh, and in such a manner that is done with mental rape. It is an intrusion, um, not of just the body, but of the mind. So I am asking that everyone come and be part of this conversation on April seventeenth. Our discussions during the H E W, Health, Education, and Welfare Meeting will focus not only on raising awareness about mental rape, but also on acknowledging an occurrence within our community to devise strategies to confront and eradicate this form of violence that happens too often to women. Too often those around us, they see the abuse, but they just watch it as a spectacle because it is not happening to them. So I am asking everyone to take part so we can, um, eradicate this from our community and stand against those impositions of authority that mentally rape women here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Permits and Licensing, Alderman Smith.
No report at this, at this time.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Everette.
Thank you. Um, I'll be looking to reschedule a Public Works Committee meeting for next week. Items to be discussed, uh, will be items deferred to the committee uh, at a February twenty-second regular city council meeting, uh, proposal for engineering services. Uh, we will also discuss, um, public works, spring, summer tasks and events. Uh, and we will start discussions on a twenty twenty-four public works, uh, budget appropriation with budgets coming up in the coming months. There was a submission to post the public works agenda for Monday, March twenty-fifth. Uh, that agenda was not posted by the city, uh, so therefore I had to, um, cancel the meeting. So we will look to schedule, reschedule the meeting for sometime next week. That's all I have this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Under the mayor's report, uh, just like to mention a couple items. At our next city council meeting, we will have the men and the coaches from T F North High School here, I mean, not T F North, uh, Shrum, sorry. Each council member, the clerk, treasurer, everybody will get, uh, these medals that they will present to the kids. Uh, it has the Alderman name, clerk name, treasurer's name on the back of them. These are the medals that we will give to them. They will be here for the resolution. Uh, as you know, uh, the seventh grade, uh, won the state championship, so we want to congratulate them. Uh, we also, uh, are gonna have them at Foot Locker. Uh, and each, uh, young man and, uh, the coaches will get to choose, uh, some shoes provided by two businessmen. But they will be here at our next council meeting and we want to thank them for not only all that they did. Uh, I know a bunch of us attended the recognition that they had at the school, uh, with the, with the kids and the parents, and they were so excited to win a championship and also place third, uh, in the state. So we'll be, uh, making sure that we give them these and, uh, tell them how much, uh, we appreciate them putting Calumet City on the map. I think Alderman Gardner told two of the kids that he'll dunk on them. Uh, but we'll, we'll make sure that the parents are here too, uh, to thank Alderman Gardner and thank Alderman, uh, Smith and thank Alderman, uh, Williams for attending, uh, the ceremony that we had. Uh, but they'll come here to make sure that we honor them, uh, in person. Also want to announce, uh, President Biden and the Housing HUD Secretary were here, well, the HUD Secretary was here today in Chicago, where they announced a hundred and seventy-three million dollars for a housing program. Uh, Calumet City intends to apply for our housing program. Uh, many of you know we have on agenda tonight, uh, to not only purchase homes and continue, uh, our program to create first-time home buyers program, but also take down dilapidated buildings, um, and work with the land bank. Uh, Alderman Gardner has been, uh, on that committee, uh, and we want to thank him. But the, the hu- Housing Secretary announced today a hundred and seventy-three million dollars that they're giving out, of which Chicago will get, uh, fifty million. Eleven million is designated for two buildings in, in Chicago. Uh, and our limit is between five to seven million dollars that we can apply for. So we want to thank our community economic department because we're gonna put them to work, uh, as they always do. So this grant is due, uh, by April thirtieth. Uh, but we want to make sure that the city gets its share of the housing dollars, uh, that was sent down from President Biden and the Housing Committee. Uh, the next item, I'd like to, many of you have asked about construction programs in the city of Calumet City. We have started our construction programs. So at, at last city council meeting, our engineers announced, uh, starting, uh, soon in the next thirty days, Torrance Avenue, Sibley to a hundred and seventieth street. This is the I Doc project, project, uh, that's working with the city of Calumet City. Uh, this will be from May first through August. Uh, also, the second project is River Oaks Drive, I ninety-four to Torrance Avenue. This is the second I Doc project. Uh, the contractor that was awarded this project when we did a bid was D Construction. This program will start, um, April first, uh, which is Monday, uh, and last through mid-August. We also have the Wilson Avenue project from Paxton and Yates. Uh, the contract and the bid that was awarded was, uh, Gallagher. Uh, this project, it will start in mid-April and go through mid-August. Uh, this is road construction, uh, that will definitely not only improve Paxton and Yates. The fourth, uh, project is a hundred and fifty-seventh street, Superior to Burnham Avenue. The contractor and the bid was, uh, awarded, uh, the contractor is Gallagher. This is a city project with construction slated for late April and going through August as well. And the last construction projects that you'll see will be a hundred and fifty-seventh, uh, street, Burnham Avenue to Wentworth Avenue. Uh, this project, uh, starts at the same time. Uh, we also have two smaller projects, uh, Forest Hill Sewer Replacement, uh, Project, and also, uh, Buffalo Avenue. Did I miss any, uh, Matt?
No, uh, the Buffalo Avenue and the Forest Hill projects will go to construction this spring. Uh, probably be wrapped up right around Memorial Day for both of those two. And then the last one, um, and we just received a bid back for the, um, the Superior Avenue Basin. Some maintenance work there, um, got some really good pricing, and that will be on the next agenda, just to give everyone a heads up.
For anyone interested, we do have a map of all these projects, and these maps are on our city website. Uh, it has listing project. You can hover over the project and see when the project is starting, uh, what the amount is, and who the, uh, the, the bids were awarded to. So I want to thank our engineers. Uh, the link is our vision, is our vision map, so you can look on the city website and see all the road construction projects. Last item under the mayor's report, I want to thank, uh, yesterday, uh, all of the, we honored the women in Calumet City, and we know that March is Women's History Month. Uh, we asked the council members to select someone to get honored. Uh, I want to thank, uh, we honored Terry Barnes, Mary Ann Banajiac, Rose Bonado, uh, Lynette Cobbs, Carol Condit, uh, Denise Cole, Cassandra Holbert, Karen Oliver. And then from the second ward, we all honored Paulette Dean, uh, Dent, and Debra Hamilton. From the third ward, Alderman Tillman recommended Loretta Tootwiler and Stephanie Washington. From the fourth ward, we had Bertha Jolly and Gloria Williams. From the Fourth Ward, we had Bertha Jolly and Gloria Williams. From the Fifth Ward, we honored Sunita Fernando Smith and the Honorable Judge Krista Butler. From the Sixth Ward, we honored Jen Holden. And then also from the Seventh Ward, we honored Tanya Reed and Phyllis Kennedy. Let's give all of these women in Calumet City a round of applause. And I want to thank Val Williams and the team for not only all the hard work, they transformed the city council chambers into a fine dining experience for the women that got honored. Thank you, Val, and everyone for your hard work on that project. Next item on our agenda, the city council reports. We'll start on this side, Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to start by making a recommendation to the Ordnance and Resolutions Committee to maybe take on the task of creating an ordinance around how we submit items for agenda and who that gets submitted to and how that process works for committee and both regular city council meeting. You know, it's been frustrating to continue to submit committee agendas and to see those committee agendas not get posted, to see those committee agendas get altered, to see agenda items not make it, and not given any proper reason for why these agenda items don't make it. Again, just would like to just have that to say tonight. And again, I know I spoke with the attorneys not too long ago regarding this, but I'll certainly make that request through the legal channels as well. But again, you know, it's just been a frustrating week and a frustrating three years, really, trying to get things on agenda and with no, with no solution in sight. So I'm just going to use my time for my first word report for that item, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Second word, Alderman Wilson, Alderwoman.
I'm sorry. I echo the request to the Chair of Ordnance and Resolutions. I know for a fact several Aldermen requested that the young men and women of T F North be honored for having a historic football and cheer season. They went further than any other year in 14 years of T F North history. And to play politics with children is shameful. I'm going to read from my list because I don't want to leave anything out. I'd like to say welcome to our neighbors that are added to the Second Ward. It is a pleasure adding new blocks. I am humbled by your kindness, and so we do welcome you within our Second Ward. There are several issues that we need to address and will work together as a ward to make sure that they are handled. Thank you to Director Tillman and her inspectors for always providing top-tier service. Anytime you call Director Tillman's office, you're going to be greeted with grace and gratitude, and that is something that we have to acknowledge. And thank you for being a she-roe during Women's History Month. Can we give it up for Director Tillman? I don't really see any members of Public Works. I just want to know what changed at Public Works. Normally, when we are at, we ask for something to happen, and it is done. There are several things that are not completed, especially on the 600 block of Calhoun. So I will speak with someone after this meeting or the next business day. I am a proud Alderwoman with two high school districts in my ward. I have two state championship districts. Congratulations to Thornwood High School's track and field team on your hard work and dedication to your sport. Huge shout out to my former Chargers cheerleader and former Second Ward baby, Maricia Harris, who is a senior at Thornwood, and she won state for track and field, representing not only Calumet City, the Second Ward, but Thornwood High School. Can we give it up for Thornwood? Proper preparation prevents poor performance. Keep raising the bar. Congratulations to T F North, the drama team, on your historic, again, another historic championship win for T F North. They took state championship for group interpretation. Shout out to another one of my Chargers babies on that team, Quentin Hall. We are proud of you, T F North. Keep being the example. Keep representing Calumet City. Give it up for T F North. The past week has been packed with activities. Starting with Saturday, I have to thank the girl, I have to thank Girls Inc., especially Girls Inc. of Chicago. This Saturday, I was honored along with some other phenomenal women who advocate for women and girls. We were honored with the She Shines Award because you know I shine. And so it is to continue our advocacy for women and girls everywhere. I'd like to thank our Calumet City Clerk, Dr. Anyota T. Fix, our Deputy Clerk, Quentin Daly, who were, was in the building at the awards brunch and accompanied my family, my mother, East Hazel Crest trustee, Maureen Forte, as well as my Chief of Staff, formerly known as the First Dude, Courtland D. Wilson, and my son Chase, as well as a block club captain from Bensley, Ms. Deborah Hamilton, and Rhonda Woods, and my dear friend, Dr. Lolita Cleveland, who had gotten off a plane just days before on mission work to Africa to come and share the spotlight with me, and I am appreciative. Sunday, thank you again to Calumet City Clerk, Dr. Anyota T. Fix, for hosting makeup and mimosas. We learned so much, and it was just a pleasure and my honor to be in a room full of women supporting women during Women's History. Monday evening, we had a phenomenal estate planning workshop hosted by attorney Mario A. Reed. If you've never had an opportunity to be in his class, I plan to have another one. He is taking us on a journey for breaking generational curses and forming generational wealth, and that is something we all can learn from.
Third word, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. To the residents that's been submitting block club applications, we are receiving them. We'll be calling a meeting with all those applicants and those block club leaders next month. Additionally, April 1st at 6:30 is the Third and Fourth Ward Monthly Town Hall Meeting. We have a full agenda, so we just ask that all the residents get there timely as we want to start right at 6:30. Again, that's April 1st, 6:30 at Downey Park Field House. And that is all, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Fourth word, Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, give an honor to God who makes all things possible. And I say that every time before I give any report. Like Alderwomen stated, our personal relationship with our God is our relationship. He is the one who guides us to make decisions for ourselves that affect the community that we serve. That's who I answer to. That's who we all answer to. So if there's some things that need to be said on this council floor, everyone has a freedom of speech to say whatever they want to say. That's the way life is. Those are the things that we are guaranteed. So when I say give an honor to God, it is so that He guides me. He guides me to make the right decisions for myself, my family, and for the people that I serve. Now with that, on to my report. Ward meeting as stated by Alderman Tillman, April 4th, 6:30, Downey Park. Please, residents, come out. PACE is hiring, still hiring, includes paid training and employment. And if anyone is interested or knows anyone that's interested, please call 708-891-8194 or 708-212-2240. Continue to report lights out, abandoned vehicles, abandoned homes, and any other irregularities that you may see in the Fourth Ward or Calumet City throughout. The sewer televising for the entire city has been temporarily delayed due to some staffing issues, but I'm assured by our engineer that that will be reconvening within the next few days. So they're about two weeks behind, Matt. Is that correct?
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm sorry to report that one of the crew members that was working on there had an unfortunate passing. So we talked with the company, and they needed a couple weeks to kind of regroup with the passing of one of their two-man crews out there. So work has been delayed a little bit, but it's back on track, and it should still be completed by the end of April.
Okay. Thank you. So while we're acknowledging some of the athletics and some of our scholars, the South Suburban College Men's Basketball Team took second place in Division Two in the nation, so I want to acknowledge them for their success this year. Not just two years ago, they went undefeated, which is something that very, that's very rare in sports, especially in college basketball. So I want to acknowledge them for their success for the last few seasons. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to start off by thanking the Jesus Shepherd of Souls Parish for allowing the First and Fifth Ward to host the Joint Annual Town Hall Meeting last week. I would like to thank Alderman Navarrete for his hard work, CMAP, MWRD for their attendance, WSP, they presented on the Pell Grant, I'm sorry, the Pell Study. And I would like to thank all of the department heads that were in attendance that stuck around and answered questions from the residents after the meeting. In other news, I would like to ask the residents to continue to contact my office, 708-891-8195 with any issues and concerns. Sidewalk program is getting ready to start. Also, there are residents emailing me and calling the office about tree cuts. Your addresses are going on a list, and the tree vendor will, Public Works are marking the trees at those set locations, and the vendors will be around at some point to remove the tree. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Sixth word, Alderman Patton.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, March 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., please join us at Our Lady of Knock Church for a confidential document treading program. We will have the truck out there. You pull right up, we'll have a bunch of volunteers out there to help empty the stuff right out of your car, dump it in the bin, and if you'd like to stay behind and watch it get tipped into the truck and shredded, you're more than welcome. Immediately following that, at 11:00 a.m., we will have the Easter Bunny along with representatives from the city clerk's office, as well as other city departments, I believe, coming to take pictures, enjoy some activities, leading up to a 12 o'clock sharp Easter egg hunt, where we will also have some door prizes and some baskets to give away to people that find a lucky ticket during the hunt. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Seventh word, Alderman Smith.
Yes, the monthly, April monthly Town Hall Meeting will be held at DA's banquet hall from 10:00 a.m. to noon on April 20th, Saturday, April 20th. My apologies for the cancellation, the abrupt cancellation of last meeting. Last meeting was canceled due to a unforeseen emergency issue that the owner had, so the facilities weren't available. Also, please continue to report your issues, concerns, as well as any, any issues you have regarding vacant properties or vacant vehicles, suspicious activity to the office. Email is asmith@calumetcity.org or contact by phone at 708-891-8197. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Item eight, or informational items to be accepted and placed on file. Is there a motion to accept items eight, A through E, in place on file?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second, Alderman Gardner.
Item E, can we make a motion to defer that to the Health, Education, and Wellness Committee for further discussion and review for the council? I know initially...
We're going to do that, Alderman, under New Business.
Okay. Thank you.
So can we defer action on E under this section then until we take items?
Yes, a redundant motion, Alderman.
Okay.
That's why I was going to move it under...
So we're not, we're just taking A through D then?
Yes.
Okay.
So the amended motion is to approve informational items A through D. Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item nine under New Business, items one through six. Are there any questions about items one through six under New Business?
Yes. May I have all of the items one through six printed so I know what they are in detail? Not just written here, whatever supplemental packet. So I want the residents to know, we receive supplemental packets, and sometimes there's information that's not printed on your agenda. They've all had five days before this meeting to read over 100 pages. I don't have anything.
Alderman, we will get that to you. Is there a motion to approve items nine, one through six?
Discussion.
There's no motion, Alderman. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. Alderman Wilson, discussion?
I am asking that my council adjourn this meeting. I do not have the same resources you have. It's like going to your job and not being able to work.
Madam Clerk, Alderman, can you finish your discussion, please? I'd like to move on to agenda.
You see another episode of mental rape.
I'm asking you a question, Alderman.
William from his pulpit.
Alderwoman, I just said you have items printed.
I am asking my council to consider adjourned this meeting.
Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on the motion of items nine, one through six, please? Alderman, are you voting yes or no? Items nine, one through six.
Is there opinion from the council regarding Ms. Wilson's, Alderwoman Wilson's?
Alderman, the Chair makes it, the Chair makes a decision on that. Alderman Wilson's motion is improper and out of order. We are in, there was a motion in the second to approve items nine, one through six. There's no motion to adjourn the meeting, Alderman. No one seconded that motion. You can't make a motion in a motion. The Chair rules that motion out of order. We could make, if she wants to make that motion after we get finished with nine to six, we can do that and take that up at that time. But right now, we enroll, call on items nine, one through six.
I have no issues with items nine, one through six.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
No, I don't have access to read anything other than what's on this paper.
Yes.
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 Item seven, there's a request to refer item seven through the Public Safety and H E W Committee. Alderman Patton, would you like to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to defer item number seven to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee. Would also like to ask the chairwoman of that committee to try and invite representatives of each of the school districts in town to that meeting so that we can have some conversation as we talk about having an intergovernmental agreement.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 10 is New Business.
A motion to adjourn.
The Alderwoman has motion to adjourn. Is, we have a lot of... Is, we have a lot of business. Is there a second to that motion? Seeing no second to that motion, we will move on to the items on the agenda. Item 10 on the agenda, new business permits. You have the permits before you.
No.
1, 2, 3. Are there any questions regarding item 10, 1, 2, 3?
Yeah.
Defense permits in the 1st Ward, Alderman.
Motion to approve items 10, 1, 2, and 3.
Motion made by Alderman Navarrete to approve it, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Item 11 are new business items, resolutions, and ordinances. Alderman Tillman?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table item 1 until the next city council meeting.
So moved.
Motion moved by Alderman Tillman to table, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor for tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 1 is tabled. It's Adam Dotson here for item 2 on the agenda, which is a Class 8 designation. Would the council like to defer this action until they're, before the council?
Yeah, I'd like to defer, well, I'd like to refer item number 2 to the Ordinance and Resolutions Committee.
Second.
There's a motion to refer item 2 to the Resolution and Ordinance Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 2 is being referred to the Ordinance and Resolution Committee. Item 12 are new business items. Financial matters. I know there's amendment for one item under 56. Alderman Gardner, you have that amended motion.
Can we take that one separately?
Yes. We'll take item 59 separately, so items, financial matters 1 through 55, I'm sorry, 58, Alderman. Alderman. We're going to take 59 separate, Clerk. Alderman Gardner on items 1 through 58.
Mayor, if I may?
Does this 59 here?
Items 2 through 6 lack a payee. I can make the assumption by the motion that it would be the Farnsworth Group, but maybe Matt can verify that. And if so, it should be specified in each individual motion.
They are Farnsworth invoices.
So I would, I would suggest the items 2 through 6 be amended by inserting the payee being Farnsworth Group.
Alderman Gardner?
Items 2 through 6.
Well, if you want to do 1 through 58 and then as amended, and then we'll take 59 separately?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you. Just to fill the council in on items 23 and 24, the last regular city council meeting, these two items were deferred to the Public Works Committee. Again, I submitted that agenda to the mayor's office and that agenda was not posted, but we were able to reach out to Republic through email, the mayor's office through email, treasurer's office through email, and try to collect information regarding these two items. If you recall, back August 23rd, 2023, the city council had a special meeting to approve an amount not to exceed $400,000 from TIF number 8. We had since paid on September 29th and December 4th two invoices for this project.
Alderman, has there been a motion in the second? So we can do a discussion on these?
I think I just said if I, if I may.
Second for discussion.
So you're going to make the motion?
I mean...
Well, you want to take them separately, Alderman?
So I apologize if this was done not, I guess, in proper order, but similar to, I guess, so let's just make a motion to, are we going to approve items 1 through 6 as amended?
So Alderman, we're going to take it, 1 through 6 will be amended. So we'll do 1 through 58 and then amend 1 through 6 under one motion and then take 59 separately. Do you want to take 23 and 24 separately?
23, 24, 62 and 63 separately.
So Alderman Gardner, can you approve items 1 through 22?
I already have a motion on this. I have Alderman Gardner ask for items 1 through 8, which is...
1 through 6.
And then 1 through 58, and then 2 through 6 to be amended. That's the motion that's already on the...
Alderman Gardner, can you please withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Alderman Navarrete, can you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
So we will take 1 through 6 as amended, then take 7 through 22, and then take 23 and 24 separately, and 62, I mean 59, and then 62 and 63 separately. So for the record, items 1 through 6 will take first to be amended. The second motion that we will do is 7 through 22. We'll take 23 and 24 separately, 59, 62, and 63. So Alderman Gardner, for the first motion for 1 through 6 to amend it to include the payee name.
1 has Farnsworth in it.
So 1 through the treasurer's action for 1, 2 through 6. So Alderman, for that first motion to amend it to include the payee name. Is there a motion to approve items 1 through 6 as amended to include the payee name? Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call the record on items 1 through 6?
Yes. Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
No, I do not know what we're paying. I do not have access to the financial documents. I am cautioning my council on continuing with this financial matter. Several of you all, I have made aware that there are some improprieties going on with a lot of things being put into agenda items for money and bill pay here in this city. Do not continue to pay things that at this time we have senior elected officials, we cannot get it right on the agenda on who we are paying. So my vote is no.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
I forgot Smith.
Is that the roll call?
Yeah, you did. Yes.
On a roll call, vote of 6 voting yes, 1 voting no. Items 1 through 6 are passed and approved. Alderman Gardner, motion on items 7 through 22?
So moved.
Motion made to approve items 7 through 22 as presented?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillman. Madam Clerk, a roll call on items 7 through 22.
Smith?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Wilson?
No. No.
Navarrete?
Yes.
On a roll call, vote of 6 voting yes, 1 voting no, items 7 through 22 are approved as presented under financial matters. Items 23 and 24, Alderman Navarrete?
Should we make a motion first or I can discuss?
You can make the motion, Alderman. You want to make the motion?
Do I have to make a motion first to discuss or?
You can either make the motion to approve or deny or table, so which one would you like to do, Alderman?
I think we're going to have to motion to approve these, approve items 23 and 24.
Motion made to approve items 23 and 24 made by Alderman Navarrete. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by Alderman Patton for discussion. Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you. I'll try to be quick and recap what I said prior to us taking these items before, but again, these items were, at our last city council meeting, deferred to the committee, the Public Works Committee. Again, this was a project that we thought was completed and we continued to receive invoices for this project, so the council wanted to know what the status of the project was and what the final amount was. I was able to find that information. Some information is still, still missing. So the information I was able to gather was, August 23rd, the council approved $400,000 to be, not to exceed $400,000, to be pulled from the TIF 8 fund for the special project of clearing the debris and for remediation at Public Works Yard. This is for all the stockpiled material that was at the Public Works Yard. This was for anticipation of a potential new public works facility, if you all recall. So $400,000 was the approved amount. We approved an invoice on September 29th of $312,000, which is pretty close to the limit. And then we approved another invoice at the December 14th meeting of $256,000. At that meeting, we were told that that was the end of it, even though we were over budget at that time by $150,000 or so. At the March 14th, 2023 meeting, we had two invoices, which you see here today, one for $405,000 and one for $211,000. So the grand total of the project is $1.586 million, of which the council only approved an expenditure of $400,000 for. We did approve to go over with the $256,000, but, so it seems that the approval was given through the mayor to proceed. Republic did provide emails to show that they were reaching out to the city to let them know what the final cost would be, that we would be going over to a certain amount, $1.5 million. The direction was to proceed. There seems to be some miscommunication maybe, and a request was made for miscommunication that the council approved this $1.5 million, but we could not find that, that approval or that, those meeting minutes. So what it comes down to is, again, we approved $400,000, the final project ended up being $1.5 million. Again, the work's been done. Republic has done the work. I could not find answer, and these invoices were for November and December. We received them in March, so of course, Republic was asking why in five months, you know, have they not been paid? I don't have an answer to that question. If someone does, feel free to chime in. But I guess the basics of it is, you know, Republic's looking to get compensated for the services they provided. These invoices are from November and December. Again, the council received them five months late. I was not allowed to have a Public Works Committee meeting to discuss the items. I was able, through email, to get some information, and that's the information I have. I would just say that moving forward, you know, we'd just be clear on, you know, if we're going to exceed an amount of money approved by the council, that we make sure that we come back to the council and let them know what that final cost is going to be. Being $1.1 million over the approved amount is pretty substantial. So hence just the, you know, the reasoning for, for all of this. But again, if anyone has any questions, I guess they can ask, or anyone wants to add anything to it, Mayor or Public Works or whoever might be in attendance today.
I would like to call up Ernie from Public Works, I mean, from Republic Services. I think part of it is the, what was approved in August for reimbursement from the TIF fund to the corporate fund. It was never saying that, and I apologize, Alderman, that that may lead to the confusion because the meeting that was held in August said reimbursement from the TIF fund to the corporate fund.
Correct.
Because the project, removal of the project, and Ernie, you can describe what you found and what you removed from the public works site after we had the August meeting and then we had the meeting with the city council in October. So please go ahead and explain to the council what you found and what you dug up.
Well, again, thank you for this time and I appreciate the board's time and effort in regards to this project and getting paid. We did haul over 870, excuse me, 53 loads from there, a big substantial amount from what was there, what we gathered. When you kind of look at it, I mean, there's 20, 30-plus years of dirt just sitting saturated and just piled and piled on it. And again, when we went through that second phase, when we went driving around through there with the mayor, the engineers, and so forth like that, it was additional work along the, I guess it would be the west side of the property to get cleaned up too as well. So we did, again, over 800-plus loads, 20,000-plus tons what was moved from that facility. And if you go by there now, it looks substantially better. And again, this was a request that was made and that was approved, and we got it out there the best we can. We used the best resources we had. We used dump trucks, opposed to roll-off boxes. And again, there is ton limits that we, and we direct haul them to the facility instead of bringing them to a transfer, again, incur additional costs. We did the most cost-effective way, working with the public works, appreciate their help, the mayor's and so forth, and we got the project done and completed.
So you also removed tree limbs, bricks. What other 20 years of stuff that was rolled?
Blacktop, bricks, that was from the old previous Sibley Boulevard, from what I understand, corridor. So there was quite a lot of stuff hidden underneath those piles of mounds of dirt that we completed a hallway.
And Alderman Navarrete, again, I think after reading the motion and reading what, because we took it out of TIF and TIF has $3.8 million in it. So part of that reimbursement was to, the initial payment for $400,000 was to reimburse the corporate fund that paid the initial bill.
Correct.
When did the project start?
August 11th. I want to say that was the first date that we started.
And we approved an amount of $400,000, so, okay, so did you incur that much in, between the 11th and 23rd then?
I'm not sure. I have to look. I'm not exactly sure, but I know the project started around August 11th as requested, and we proceeded to move forward and clean up the, all the dirt and debris that was 20,000-plus tons of waste that was sitting there in the, the Public Works Yard. I'm really surprised that the EPA didn't get it there earlier, so, but again, we hauled it all the way as requested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Again, and thank you for being responsive to the emails. Again, I don't think this is a question of the scope of work or how that work was handled. I think it's just internally the mishandling of approvals and amounts to be taken from a TIF. The TIF currently generates about $100,000 in increment every year, so it takes us some time to get $1.5 million. The council was under the impression that we were going to spend $400,000, and we spent $1.5 million, $1.586, so closer to $1.6 million for this project. So the council may not have been willing to spend that amount of money, consider, you know, especially without an update for this new public works facility that, you know, we're still waiting on an update from regarding, so... The council was under the impression that we were going to spend 400,000 dollars, and we spent 1.5 million dollars, 1.586, so closer to 1.6 million for this project. So the council may not have been willing to spend that amount of money, consider, you know, especially without an update for this new public works facility that, you know, we're still waiting on an update from regarding. So again, Republic, it's not so much about your, your scope of work, or how you, how you handled the work. It's more our internal process of how we presented a $400,000 project amount, and then the council's now taken to a 1.6 million dollar amount. Again, the, the fund now is going to be depleted to a couple hundred thousand, and we still have a special project that's taking place adjacent to that property, that we're not sure where that project has ended, that we approved 200,000 for. So again, the TIF eight seems to be wiped out at this point, again, and that was not the council's intention. And I think that's the point of all this, and that was the point of the Public Works Committee meeting, and that was the point of the back and forth, to correct the missteps that were taken.
Alderman, just for the record, so the TIF fund is not depleted. We received a $750,000 grant to remove all of the debris from Park Harbor. That's the 200,000 dollars to reimburse the corporate fund, and the 500,000 to reimburse the TIF fund. So that was a $750,000 grant given to us by Representative Marcus Evans.
Can you please provide the information for that? I asked your office for that, and you respond, you haven't provided that information.
We'll provide it to you. I mean, it's, Matt, do you have that? I know Ken.
So you're saying we received a grant of a total of 1.2 million, 750 plus 500?
750,000, not 500,000.
750.
750,000.
There was a $750,000 grant appropriation. I think that came through in one of the congressmen's offices, and it's for Park Harbor and
Public Works.
Public Works. I'd have to look at the details of how it was, what's in there.
You know when that was submitted?
We received it, I want to say, January. I want to say, the board came through, somewhere around there.
Is anyone from our grant department here to talk about that grant? Or is that just strictly too far in source?
No, we were working with Don Alexi on that one, and I think maybe Val, you might have been involved in a little bit, but I don't know if you were intimately involved in that project.
Do we have an award letter for this, or?
I think there might be a little bit of, I just want to clarify a couple things. There are grants that are competitive that we work with, you know, on your CED programs, and then there are line items that the mayor requests on his job, which are under the Cal bill. And I believe that what you're referring to is a signature grant and not a competitive thing that we did. And those things are coming in quite often that we're trying to facilitate. So I think that's the difference, Alderman.
Thank you. Sure, sure. Right, you wouldn't know.
Yeah, and that's correct. That one would be more of a appropriation that we get from the state versus, so it's not like, not a non-compete grant.
Alderman, we'll get it to you, but let's, you want to wrap this up on this item?
Sure, but was there a reason I couldn't get it in the week, two weeks since I requested it?
Alderman, if we take a recess, I can go give it to you now, but we'd like to continue the meeting. If you want me to take a recess and go send it to you right now, we can do that. If the council wants to indulge, but let's, let's move on with this one.
We could, but, I mean, I would please, please send it. I mean, I've heard you say you'll send something, and I never see it, so just please send it. That would be helpful.
Are we still in discussion?
We're in roll call, Alderman. Alderman Navarrete, are you finished?
But we're in discussion.
Are we, we're in discussion? Clerk, are we in discussion? Okay. Well, I would like to speak, since we are still in discussion.
Can you let Alderman Navarrete finish first? And then Alderman, Alderman, are you finished?
Yeah, yeah, so the balance of the TIF eight is somewhere going to be around the 200 to 300,000. That's all I have.
Do you want to get the exact number from the treasurer's office of what's in TIF eight?
They sent it.
They sent it?
Yep. Thank you to the treasurer's office as well.
Alderman Wilson?
So this is what, why I'm voting no, when I cannot see the bills. So again, we approved 400,000 dollars. That's like sending your child to the store with a $20 bill and telling them, buy $4 worth of eggs, and they spend the entire $20 bill. What should have been 400,000 dollars was near 1.6 million dollars. Whether we have the money or not, if we, if it doesn't come before the council to approve, then we become like other neighboring towns, where one person runs through the money. I understand the work was done, but it should have been brought before this council. We represent you and your tax dollars. It was not. 400,000 dollars and 1.6 million dollars is a 1.1 million dollar, 1.2 million dollar difference. So when things go up, I don't care if we have the money, if we don't. If we say this is what it is, that should be it. But our council will continue to vote, knowing it didn't come through them the right way. That is all.
For the record, before we take a vote, as I stated, we got a $750,000 grant from Marcus Evans. I will send it to the council tonight, and we take a recess. Every invoice came before the city council, so I don't want anyone thinking that this was just approved blindly. All of them were before the council. Right now, we have the two that were brought before the council that we're about to vote on. So Madam Clerk?
Discussion. Just for the record, you send the $750,000 grant is going to replenish the TIF eight fund?
500,000. The other 200,000 is for all of the work that Public Works did at Park Harbor. So specifically, the grant was for Park Harbor and for Public Works.
So what's in the fund now will be increased by 500K?
Yes.
We did approve 200,000 for Park Harbor.
Park Harbor.
So would that be replenished as well?
Yes. Did it come out of the corporate fund, Mr. Treasurer? It came out of TIF eight, Mr. Treasurer? Yes. Okay, all right.
Yeah, I have the TIF eight expenditures from the treasurer's office.
Is it in there, Alderman?
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on item 23 and, was it 22 and 23? Alderman? Yes.
23 and 24? Yeah, just with the caveat that moving forward, the council, the council, I will not be approving any more bills that exceed an amount approved by the council. But for this one, I will, I will vote yes.
I'm not giving them another chance to sneak money past us.
Alderman, yes or no, Alderman? We'd like to move on.
Don't do that.
Yes, yes or no, Alderman?
I have the floor, and I'm speaking.
Alderman, I am the chair. Yes or no, Alderman?
Do not do that, mental rapist. Do not do that. No.
Please move on, Beyonnie Alderman. Please mark her as a no, and move on to, on the roll call, clerk.
Yes.
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 The next item is item 59 on the agenda. Alderman?
25, 25.
I'm sorry. Did we skip 25? I'm sorry, hold on a second, I'm sorry. We got to go 25 to 58, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, 25 to 50. Alderman Gardner?
Yeah, someone wanted to take one of them, so.
All right, so for the record, everyone, we approved items one through 24, and now we are going through items 25 through 58.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items number 25 through 58 as so presented.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner.
Second.
Second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 No.
On a roll call of six voting yes, one voting no, items 25 to 58 are approved. Alderman Gardner, items 59?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 59 as amended.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner to approve items 59 as amended?
I would like to read the amendment.
Alderman, can you mention the amended amount?
The amended amount is to move, move to amend, approve the renewal of 4-1 through, 4-124 through 4-125, property and liability insurance policy in the amount of $1,159,572. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any and all documents necessary to facilitate the renewal, and authorize the treasurer to remit the payment to Insure Source LLC in the amount stated above to be charged to account 01050-52230, fleet and liability.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, is there a second?
Discussion.
Second by Alderman Smith.
Discussion.
Alderman, you don't have to be nasty and rude. I heard you twice, Alderman. We're going to get to you, Alderman. We just had a motion and a second. We will recognize you in the second, so please be patient. The motion was made for the record by Alderman Gardner, and second by Alderman Smith. Alderman Wilson has, has requested discussion.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson, you're recognized.
I match energies. Don't do that. I have a question. This is about vehicles, this liability insurance. It says fleet and liability. That, I have to ask the questions because I don't have the information, and I want the same five days that y'all had to review. And the reason I'm asking, because there is a company that keeps calling me and contacting me for equipment that they have never received payment for. And the equipment is a 2021 Yukon Denali and a 2023 Cadillac that is billed to the taxpayers of this city that did not come before the council. The contract that they sent me has the mayor and Cleo Jones's signature on it. We don't know anything about that.
That's not this item, Alderwoman.
And so that's what I'm asking.
No, that is not, thanks.
That's not, that's satisfactory. Let's move on to the roll call. Madam, Madam Clerk?
I guess I'm done, because you gave every other man.
Alderwoman?
Said, are you finished?
Alderwoman, you're not going to do this, continues at city council meeting. Please have decorum, Alderman. You are elected official.
You have decorum.
Alderman?
You have decorum.
Madam Clerk, please call a roll. It's item 59 that is amended.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 For the record, I'd like to request that items 62 and 63 be removed from the agenda.
No.
Alderman Gardner, can you approve items 60 and 61? Or do you? 60 and 61, Alderman?
What he removing is those illegal cars I just spoke of.
That's not.
What items are removing? 61?
62.
63.
And 63 is CT proposal for design and storage for the veterans' office.
And DLL finance for the Yukon Denali that he drives.
That's not that, Alderman.
That is that. I have the contract. They sent it to me because they could not get in touch with anybody from the city to pay the bill.
We will have the treasurer give you what it is, Alderman, so we're going to move on. Items 60 and 61, Alderman Gardner. You can do what you want, Alderman.
It's right here.
Alderman Gardner, 60 and 61.
Two cars billed to the taxpayers.
What'd you say?
I'm sorry.
60 and 61, Alderman, are CCMS?
I would like to make a motion to approve items 60 and 61 as so presented.
Item 60 and 61 is so presented, made a motion by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Items 64 through 66, Alderman Gardner.
I apologize. Why are 62 and 63 being removed?
If you ask questions, Alderman, 60, 62, we need more information from Senator Tammy Duckworth. This is the design for the Veterans Center that's on there that's not attached to this. 63, you had questions about, get more information on.
I can't ask my questions right now?
No, we removed them from the agenda, Alderman. We're on 64 through 66.
Do we have to vote to remove them from the agenda, or no?
I can remove it from the agenda, Alderman, so.
Do we have to vote to remove them from the agenda, or no?
Alderman, we're on 64, 65, and 66.
Attorney Walsh, do we have to, do we have to vote to remove items from the agenda?
We just voted to amend items, but we don't have to vote to remove items.
Alderwoman, you're not, you're not, you're not authorized, Alderman.
I'm just asking a question.
Ask a question. No, you're not, Alderman. We're on 64, 65, and 66.
But what happened to 62 and 63?
Alderwoman, unless you want to be removed from this meeting.
I dare you. I triple dog dare you. Remove me.
Alderman?
Because there is case law that that is a violation of Open Meetings Act. Here it is, right here.
Alderman?
Remove me.
Is there a motion, Alderman, for 64, 65, 66? That's the payment of the bills and payroll.
63, still need to get a draft.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner to approve 64, 65, 66.
What happened to 62 and 63?
Is there a second?
A second for 64, 65, and 66.
Second by Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
It's illegal.
On 64, 65, 66.
Discussion.
Alderman, 64 and 65, 66. That's what we're?
I have a discussion.
About 64, 65, and 66?
Yes.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Approved bill list is 352,000, is that correct? Seems like it should be a larger number.
Is that the emergency? No.
No, that's the, that's the.
No, that's the bill listing. Last, at the last council meeting, Alderman, it was probably the same amount, but that's what's on the bill listing, is $352,000. Do you want it to be higher, Alderman, or lower?
It seems like it might, might be higher, yeah. It seems low. Just want to make sure it's the correct amount, that's all.
That's because $13,000 was taken out of 63, those cars.
Alderman? We have the bill listing here.
Just for Alderman Navarrete's inquiry, as you can see, Alderman, there are a number of motions made on this particular council agenda that, that would, that would enter into the aggregate amount of the bill listing, but the, the bill listing, other than the motions that are on the agenda, is the $352,000 figure.
So Alderman, I have a copy of the bill listing. The bill listing, the correct amount is 352,531 and 26 cents. So your question is, is too low, or what is your question, Alderman?
I just wanted to make sure that, that was correct, yeah. I think the explanation that Treasurer Tarka gave regarding items 62 and 63 answered the question.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you continue with the roll call?
Yes, on 64, 65, and 66.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
We do not have executive session tonight. We're unfinished business. We do not have executive session tonight. Unfinished business. Alderman Smith?
I just want to remind the residents, basically, continue to report your concerns and issues regarding suspicious activity, making homes, or faking or abandoned vehicles. You can contact 708-891-8197, or email asmith@cuyumincity.org. Also, the sidewalk list is open. If you have a request, please contact the office. Thank you.
Unfinished business, Alderman Patton.
Thank you. Just like to wish everybody a happy Easter, and in honor of the Sweet 16 kicking off,
Sixteen kicking off, hail alma mater ILL.
We're gonna see if they're gonna win, Alderman. You got the, Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to wish all the beautiful families of the Fifth Ward a happy Easter. Go to church and eat well.
Unfinished business, Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Easter, everyone.
Unfinished business, Alderman Tillman?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Unfinished business, Alderwoman Wilson?
Thank you to my team. Thank you to intern Michaela. Thank you to my ward. Have a blessed Easter. If you need to contact me, thanks to my wonderful team, you can email me at monae, that's M as in Mary, O as in Oscar, N as in Nancy, E as in Edward, T as in Tom, monae@alderwomanwilson.com. You can email me directly at alderwoman, monae@alderwomanwilson.com. You, of course, can continue to text or call me at 708-586-4990. Please, in a world where you can be anything, choose to be kind. Choose to protect the mental health and well-being of yourselves and your neighbors, and stop mental rape and abuse against women. Happy Easter.
Alderman Navarette?
Just want to wish my colleagues and the residents a happy Easter. That's it. Thank you.
There being no further business to come before the city council, is there a motion to adjourn at 7:38 PM? So moved. Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Patton. All those in favor?
(inaudible).
Meeting adjourned at 7:38 PM. Thank you, everyone.